Folks, I'd like to call a meeting to order. It's now 6:30. Welcome to the meeting of the Howard's Board Appeals. On this date, August 27th, if that's correct. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the Town of Howard and the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. I'd like to have, oh, actually, it's not. So you know this meeting is being recorded? And if anyone wants to record the meeting themselves, you'd be the first, but you need to inform the Chair, okay? I'd like to have everyone introduce themselves, please. Chris.
Chris Murphy.
Marilyn Roth.
Alex Van Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Kenneth Dixon.
John August.
Okay. And I'd like to have the clerk call the first case. And if you'd be coming to the front in the first case, appreciate it.
Case number 2025-32, Sean and Linda Dolan. Through Kevin M. Boyer, the owner's property at 6 Port Pines Road. Assesses map, 7 parcel, 2, 0. To the RH1 zoning district, the applicant seeks a special permit from 325-54, 8 and 4 and 5, non-conforming structures used in 325, attachment to Table 2, area regulation, and 325, attachment 3, Table 3, height and bulk regulation. To construct an addition on pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws. 325-54, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6. The case is continued from July 30, 2025. The Howard's Health Department commented that an existing foundation does not meet setback due to septic tank. However, proposed expansion close to the tank will be on blocks or similar footage to not be further encroached on septic tanks.
Yes, very well.
Pull the mic closer, I guess I'll...
Thank you.
The Howard's Highway Department and the Howard's Police Department submitted comments indicating they had no concern. Can you hear me now?
No.
Maybe I heard that comment before.
Yeah, it's not, we can't really hear you. Is it on?
Yeah.
No other comments from the town departments are but hers. You heard me that time?
Yes.
Yeah, very well, thank you.
Just to highlight one thing that Al said, the Health Department has no concerns for the project as proposed, and no other departments do. The, I'd like to ask the applicant representatives to introduce themselves and say with the case.
I'm Kevin Boyer, B&amp;D Custom Builders, and our client.
I'm Sean Dolan, the homeowner.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, Sean and Linda live in the home as their full-time residents. We are especially appreciative of having the opportunity to speak first tonight because Sean's daughter Nicole's water just broke, and he's about to be a grandfather, so...
Congratulations. Thank you. First one.
So, that, we're very excited about that, and that actually dovetails very nicely into the reason we're here. The Dolans are looking to take down their existing garage and expand the house to provide for a family room space for their ever-growing family case in point, Nicole, tonight. So, we're, we are not in any way looking to, really, increase much of the overall lot coverage. It's less than 1% that we're proposing. We're not getting any closer to the street. We're not getting any closer to the right lot line. We're not getting any closer to the rear lot line than currently exists. We feel that, that obviously, in this particular case, because it's a dead end, and literally the second to the last house on the street, that we won't impact traffic in any way, and the aesthetics are such that I think we only enhance the neighborhood with the design as done by Paul McCarthy, who's also a resident of the Town of Howard. If you'd like, I can go down through each of the findings as it pertains to the project, but I'm also available to answer any questions if that's simpler.
What do you feel is, whatever you feel is pertinent regarding, you know, your request for relief?
Yeah, I, I think the fact that we're looking for less than 1% coverage and simply looking to provide a family room that the house currently doesn't have, and coupled with the very real need for that additional square footage, I think we're, we're comfortable. The only thing that I will also highlight, and the, the plan itself does show a structure in the back, a stairway that's going down, and we're actually eliminating that. So if anything, we're making that component smaller. We're making, we're taking away a little bit of the square footage if the stairs off the back, existing second floor elevation are considered to be a structure, we're going to get rid of that. So, in, as far as lot coverage is concerned, if anything, it might get a little bit smaller.
Okay. All set?
All set, yes. Any questions, please? Thank you, Chair.
My only, again, it, are, are your neighbors aware of what you're, you propose?
They are, and, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not only are the neighbors aware, but we make a point prior to commencement of any construction project to go to each of the neighbors, introduce ourselves, introduce myself, provide them with my contact information, so that if, in the event that there's any incident, and you hope there isn't, but if somebody backs into a mailbox or something along those lines, we want to be the first to know of it, and we will absolutely take care of it. We take a great deal of care, recognizing that this is these people's homes. This is not only the Dolans' homes, but the neighbors too, and we respect that completely. Thank you for asking.
Chair, I would just even go a little bit further than that. Like, we've lived in the neighborhood, we've owned the house for 15 years, we've been full-time residents for almost 10 years. The thing that we like about Howard's is also the neighborhood that we live in. When you come down C Street, it's, it's a one lane. There's probably about 22 houses. I would say, I know all 22 people, and I would say I'm friendly with at least 20 of them.
And that's only because the other two don't know you that well.
Exactly. And I would say the McDonnas across the street have a dual parcel. Jerry's already said to me, listen, if you need to park cars there, you know, with construction, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it. Like, it's all good, we're on board. The wheelers to the right of me are absolutely on board with this. Gil Stone, who is the only other full-time resident, little older gentleman, is like, whatever you need from me. So, like, one of the reasons we want to continue to make the investment in the neighborhood is, we love it. It's just so unique in the sense that we could walk to the beach, we could walk to town, and the fact that I know 22 of the 22 neighbors, and I'm friends with 20 of them. I think it's spectacular. So, we're looking to make this investment because we love the neighborhood. We would never do anything to disrupt it, that relationship, to the point where I even got Brian, because my next-door neighbor is in construction, I said, "I'm not ruining our neighborhood and friendship," because I got someone I, you know, I don't want to even jeopardize that with, right? So, we're fully committed to Howard's the Cape, and we're excited about this project.
Any, what are the, what's your timeframe?
And that's the other thing I should have added. We don't want to do this until, we're, we're looking at November 1st. You know, because everyone is summertime, and I think September and October are just great months here, we're just like, let people enjoy September and October. Most of our neighbors don't stay that long, but we're looking at a November 1st timeframe.
Now, what is your status on maintaining construction vehicles on the lot?
As Sean mentioned, we've already gained permission to park vehicles across the street. It's quite a nice parking area for those of you familiar...
That big, like, three-car...
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So we're going to be able to do that. The fact is, is that we do have a driveway that we can work with. It won't, it will ultimately become a landscaped area, but at present, we do have the driveway in front of the existing garage, so we'll be able to park vehicles there, too.
And, and I have a letter from Jerry McDonough, who's very good friends with us, stating that, so, there are no issues with that.
On your west lot line, it's very close to your, your neighbor's property?
Yep.
I think 1.7.
Seven.
You know, so, obviously, you're going to be encroaching, I, I believe, on your neighbor's property in order to construct the garage. All right?
We're going to be doing sheet pilings so that we, and we'll be doing those by hand, actually, to, sort of minimize any noise or any further disturbance, but, yeah, we're very sensitive to, to that issue, and we'll take every precaution to have as little impact on her property as possible. Sean has actually already proactively offered to, to do, not just re-landscape any disturbance there, but also to improve it.
That's all questions I have, John?
The only question I have, I mean, I think it's a good project, and it's going to meet the Gail and Dietrich cases, is just trying to figure out why the building coverage increases, given that you're decreasing the distance from the lot line or removing those stairs.
There's a, there's a little, there's a cantilever on the back to the left part of the family room, so...
Does it go more than two feet out?
Yeah, it's, that's what it is, it's about two feet, yeah.
Yeah, so really, I think for building coverage, you don't need to include that.
Okay, so that, even better.
Right. Yep. That was my other question.
No questions. Chris?
I have no questions.
Marilyn? No questions.
Al?
No questions.
Okay. All righty. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this, this application?
Just me, I'd like it to go forward.
That was a little joke.
All right, so, the, any additional questions for the board? Obviously, there's not. So let's just go to the sheet that I gave you?
Sure.
And, if anyone in the board, if there was a copy of this, we're just going over the documents and conditions of findings which we, we have found. Rather than reading everything, we just ask the applicant and the board to read them and review it, okay? So, regarding documents that we were, in the application, are there any changes, corrections, or additions? Anybody?
No.
Okay. On the recommended, recommended findings and conditions based upon documents submitted as of the date, anybody see any changes, additions, corrections? You're all set with that? Okay? And regarding motions, besides the standard motion regarding the laws, I would recommend that we include, during the life of the, the project, there'll be no construction or exterior landscaping between June 30th and Labor Day of any year. The, regarding the construction vehicles being parked on the applicant's property, I guess we've, because he, I think we want to eliminate number two. Do we agree with that? Okay? Because he's got, I think we made allowances for, in the neighborhood, to take care of construction vehicles, so we will be getting rid of the second, the usual one in the violation terms. So that's it for the conditions. I'd like to make a motion that regarding the documents and findings of facts and conditions, that we approve what's been noted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, signed voting in this case would be Al, Chris Murphy, John August, Kenneth Dixon, and Marilyn Roth. I'd like to entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? Chris? I'd like to vote on closing discussion.
Aye.
Okay. All right. I'm affirming there's no more discussion by the board, okay? Al, did you make a motion, please?
On case number 2025-32, Sean and Linda Dolan, do we hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Through Kevin M. Boyer, the property, owner's the property located at 6 Port Pines Road, assesses map 17. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-54, non-conforming structures and uses, the attachment to Table 2, area regulation, the height and bulk regulation to construct an addition on existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 325-54 and Mass. General Law 40A, Section 6. The grant is consistent with the Gail and related cases, as there will be no intensification in or existing, or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. On a pre-existing nonconforming lot, and as proposed, the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereon too is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. A violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard's zoning bylaws pursuant to MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do we have a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay, Marilyn? Okay. All right, those voting, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
You got it.
Thank you so much, thank you all.
Good luck, too.
Off to the hospital.
Thank you.
Ken?
Oh. My foot. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you going to have a view? In your new condition, you're going to have a view over your neighbors?
Yeah, we definitely have an easy access view, so...
You're the grandchild.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Good evening.
Case number 2025, is this up louder now?
Yes.
Pine, 19 Pine Needle Lane, Stephen and Ellen McKenna, through Richard...
No, David.
Excuse me, David Quina?
Quina.
Quina?
Quina.
Yep.
The property located at 19 Pine Needle, assesses map, also map four parcel, FT1-21, and RH1 zoning district, the applicant seeks a special permit on 325-54, Section 8, 1, and 2, and non-conforming structures used in 325, attachment 3, Table 3, hope, bulk, height and bulk regulation. To construct an addition on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, 325-54, and Mass. General Law 40A, Section 6. The Howard's Health Department commented that the project does not further encroach upon existing variance setbacks to the septic system. It had applied the restrictions required prior to the building permit sign-off. The Howard's Planning and District Department submitted comments indicating that they had no concerns. No other comments from other town departments or budgets were received.
David, I'm assuming you got the copy of the staff report that they did?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'd like to have the applicant representative introduce themselves.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I am the owner's agent and contractor on this project, David Quina. So, as you all can see, this is, this is the kind of project where I can honestly say, I wish, I wish they were all like this. It's pretty straightforward, in our opinion. If you look at the site plan that we supplied from the engineer, Dan Moran, I apologize, Dan Croto, the addition's about a 13 by 8'8" addition on the existing entryway inside the mudroom there. It does not extend beyond the existing outer boundaries of the house. It's, it's contained within the existing footprint. The increase, we're looking at on the building coverage, where we're allowed 30%, we're going from 21.1% to 22.3%, so we're still compliant. And then the issue that we have on this project is that the site coverage, we have a 35% max on the site coverage. We're existing at 38.9%, and we're going to 40.1%, so about a 1.5% increase in site coverage. Outside of that, we're not getting any closer to any setbacks. We're not, well, we are intensifying the site coverage, the existing site coverage nonconformity. There are no issues with height, we're not getting any closer to the septic system. It's a pretty straightforward project, I think. It's, it's in line with a few cases, actually, Gail versus Boston, Dietrich versus Chatham. If, if there's any questions, I mean, I'm happy to go down the list here.
First of all, the, only key question I have for you is, how are you going to move all those nice adranges that are in that, that little alcove there? I think they're very nice, particularly the big red one.
Yep, they're going to be transplanted. All right, so we're going to take them off and put them back.
Later in the fall, can't do it too soon.
Right, right.
But that was, other than that, I think it's straightforward, and I have myself, I think it meets all the requirements, particularly your request for the site coverage minor increase, where it's a nonconforming now, and it is in line with the Gail case that you indicated, okay?
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Chris?
I think straightforward is pretty, encapsulates what this project is. No questions.
I do, Kirk.
Thank you.
I do, too. It's going to be a good-looking project when you complete it.
It is, thank you, yes.
It's very natural...
Hey, grazing off the house. No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. The timeframe?
End of October, November. And as, as far as off-street parking, we have adequate parking on the site.
All right, so we're going to be, we're going to be asking you to maintain construction vehicles on the site?
Yes. If, if you look at the site plan, there's, there's a large driveway, I know you all went by there, because there's a large driveway right where the addition's going to go, but there's a half-round existing driveway on, on the other side of the house as well, Pine Needle. So they actually have two driveways. This is a pretty small project, it's an in-and-out project for us. So, there's not going to be a lot of vehicles, but whatever vehicles we do have are going to be maintained on the site.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this case? Okay. Very none, I'd just like to refer the board and the applicant, and the agent, to the staff report that they did. Are there guiding hearing documents, application hearing documents, are we complete on this? Any corrections or changes, additions?
No.
Okay? And regarding the recommended findings and conditions based upon the documents submitted to date, any changes on that, or additions? Okay. All right. And regarding the motions that the Chair recommends, it would be the typical three, which is no construction between June 30th and Labor Day.
Brian, just one correction on the...
Oh, yes.
The ZBA application was submitted July 16th, not June 16th. Project history, etc.
Really? Okay.
It would have been after the denial letter.
It, it's strange, but it's not. Take a look at, check the application.
7/16.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have one on, on thing here where it's, it's different, yeah. All right, so this is, thanks for checking that.
You mean the...
All right, so it's June, it's July 16th on the application date. Okay. All right, excellent. Yeah, that's the one. So this is... Look at the, the letter from requiring... Is this the one? All right, so, Town of Howard's letter is dated July 11th. All right. Okay, and this is the 16th. Okay, all right, so we're all set there. I'll make that correction. Anything else, Sean? Recommended findings? Okay. Good catch. The, so the motion, as far as conditions, again, the construction condition, leaving the construction vehicles on the site, and the typical terms for violation terms of the special permit.
You have to change all the dates on the application hearing documents, too. The narration, that should be July. Number one.
July, July.
Yes, and then you find, that, that's not part of the filings, but I will, I will correct it, correct it, okay? Let me see that again. That doesn't, that part doesn't get entered into the term.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. With the corrections noted, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the documents, finds, the facts, and conditions, approval as stipulated with corrections.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to hear a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Vote on closing.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Voting this case would be Al, Chris, John August, Kenneth, and Marilyn. I'd like to hear a motion if we, is there anyone, actually, I hear a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Al. Vote on closing discussion?
Aye.
All right. Chair, now entertain a motion from the clerk.
Case number 2025-37, 19 Pine Needle Lane, Stephen and Ellen McKenna, the owner of the property located at 19 Pine Needle Lane, assesses map, they've been granted a special Granting is consistent with the Gail and related cases, and there will be no intensification of one or more existing nonconformities, and no new nonconformities, no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood or pre-existing, pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create additional negative impacts with respect to noise, traffic, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereon too is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following condition. During the life of the project, there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. That for the life of the approved project, the construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. A violation of the terms of these conditions in this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do I have a second for this?
Second.
Chris? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Appreciate it, have a nice night. Have a nice night.
The next case is Seahorse Lane. So the folks who are the applicant and agent, if they could step forward, appreciate it. Now, I'd like the clerk, read the motion, please. I mean, read the case application.
Case number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, twenty-five Seahorse Road. Michelle M. Zettergren through Trevor Kurtz, the owner of the property located at twenty-five Seahorse Road, assesses map thirty-four parcel S one dash nine in the RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from three twenty-five fifty-four A one nonconforming structures and uses. Attachment, three twenty-five, attachment table two, table table two area regulations to construct in addition on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws three twenty-five fifty-four and Master General Law forty-eight, section six. The Howard Health Department commented that the basement shall not be used for sleeping and depending upon the height of the ceiling may meet the definition of a bedroom, which may require a deed restriction. A Title V inspection will be required prior to the building permit sign-off. The Howard planning department and historic commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. Marion James Spiegel of Fort Indian property of Butters submitted a letter in favor of the granting of the special permit.
No.
Not in favor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All the comments from the town departments or Butters were received.
Okay, and let me, I'm going to read the letter from Marion James Spiegel is the record. It was addressed to the board secretary, Lisa Shaw. We received a notice in the mail from Brian Sullivan about the above listed case before the Howard zoning board. Our property at Fort Indian Trail abuts a property at twenty-five Seahorse Road. Mary's father had the house built in nineteen eighty-three and has remained in the family since. We are now the sole owners after passing of Mary's brother, Thomas, in May of two thousand twenty-four. Because of potential negative impact on our property value of an abutment home with less than the required setback limits, we are not in favor of granting this permit and request that the zoning board deny it. Thank you for your help in this matter, Mary and James Spiegel. And again, there's indicated no other comments from other Butters or town departments. I'd like to invite the applicant representatives to induce themselves and to present your case.
Hi, folks. My name is Trevor Kurtz from Kurtz Designs and I'm representing Michelle Zettergren, the owner who is in virtual attendance.
I can see her outline.
We're here seeking relief, the need for which stems from the pre-existing, the nonconforming nature of the property and the owner's desire to add three foot four to the right elevation and three foot six to the front elevation. The setbacks, while only the front setback increases, it's still compliant and the rear and side setbacks don't change. Our, we've increased minimally building coverage, but it's still conforming and it's our desire to remove and replace the rear, the existing rear patio to reduce site coverage into compliance. So I don't, that's all I have.
Okay.
Do you folks have any questions for me?
Be fine. Trevor, do you have, did you get a copy of the staff report?
I did.
Okay, I'm sure you have.
Oh, I did want to mention about the health department question.
Yes.
If that matters or
Go right ahead, you can ask a question.
The room that's, the basement area is finished pre-existing, but there's a desire to redo that, to make the stair, the staircase code compliant. So that room, the room at the bottom of the stair is open to the stairwell and there's no egress windows in that space. So according to building code, that could not be a bedroom, regardless of what the ceiling height is.
That's my understanding, correct.
So I just wanted to state that for the record.
And this board doesn't have jurisdiction as to how you redesign. But I want to make everyone understand that. The, but the, and at some point, when the design is presented to the building department, should there be an approval time, then before the building inspector issues a permit, or the building commissioner, then, you know, the board of health needs to sign off on it. And of course, any number of bedrooms that are put in a house, really, it's subject to your septic system. So it, should you ever decide to make any changes like that and you can create an egress, which is always possible, you know, for a basement, you could then reapply to the building, the health department, based on your septic system design, you know, for additional bedrooms.
I just thought it muddied the waters for the homeowner. If hypothetically in the future, if they decided to combine two of the first floor bedrooms to one and wanted to then have the third bedroom still, then they've had this deed restriction that exists.
I don't, I, first of all, there's been, there's no guarantee of a deed restriction. I did check that out with the board of health. I'm not quite sure, even after their explanation, why they were brought up the fact of having a deed restriction.
Okay.
Because the bottom line is, the building department with the health department approval either signs off on a building permit or they don't. So you can't put a bedroom, you know, or pool table, you know, or make any type of habitable space, which already is, without having a permit signed off by the building, building department.
Yes.
And anytime there's any type of habitable space, the board of health gets their say as well to sign off on a permit. So, and the issuance of a bedroom is based upon one, second egress potential, and also height is a factor on a bedroom. So given, if you meet all those requirements, myself speaking personally, there is no reason in the future you couldn't apply for, you know, to make that into a bedroom should you meet the building inspector's requirements.
Okay.
All right, and I'm not quite sure, we haven't, I haven't seen any deed restrictions in the past being issued regarding this type of scenario, so.
Okay, I just, again, I wanted to state it for the record. I know we're not here for that part, but that's all.
But I, I was confused by it as well.
Okay.
I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
May I add any comments?
Oh, yes, you're the owner. Go right ahead, thank you.
Hello, Michelle Zettergren for the record. For what it's worth, there's no intention to add additional bedrooms or to put a bedroom in the basement. The house was built in nineteen ninety-nine. I bought it in two thousand seven. I've owned the home for eighteen years. My intention is to keep the home until I'm no longer here. It's a family home for us. We don't rent the property or do anything like that. Because of the age of the home, we're at a point where, you know, I need new windows, new roof. We need to, you know, make some accommodations. So we were simply looking to make sure that we were in, you know, working with what the zoning regulations are. The footprint of the house was the footprint when I bought it and what's with the house right now is the way it's been for the last eighteen years since I bought it.
No, thank you. And one of your agent here was trying to point out the fact that not having you restricted regarding use of the, the use of your basement in the future and that is up to the building inspector or the commissioner and the board of health. So I don't believe there's going to be any type of letter written. If there's going to be happening, have a discussion with the board of health. I'm sure you can avoid that type of restriction on your, on your property. I have actually, your timeframe for construction?
The idea was the fall.
And maintaining construction vehicles in the what?
There's plenty of parking there.
Yes. Chris, did you have any questions on this?
No questions.
Yeah, I thought it was fairly straightforward.
I do have just one question. I'm looking at the application itself and it talks about the site coverage.
Yes.
And I agree that it's being reduced, but by your own calculations, by this application, it's being reduced to twenty-five point five, whereas twenty-five percent is the maximum allowed. So it's not, I think you've made the statement and it's in the finding of facts, Brian, that it's becoming, the site coverage will be conforming and that doesn't appear to be the case. Can you clarify that for us?
Okay, real quick, I just want to, and on the site plan, it is down to twenty-five percent, which is what I went by. I think there's an error in the application.
Correct. That's correct.
Good catch. We're trying to get good applications in here.
That might be removal of one brick.
I don't disagree.
I've started to learn to look at the site plans. I didn't have any further, I have no further questions. Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to? Yes, please go to the podium and identify yourself and, and where you live.
I'm Mary Spiegel and I'm just, I live on Fort Indian Trail. So when we got the card, we weren't sure what exactly was going to happen because that property is right behind us. So when I, I went to the building and they gave me this so I could understand it better. So it sounds like they're, they're actually going forward with building in the, towards the street. Is that correct? Okay, so that doesn't affect me. The thing that I was looking at though, they're going to redo the deck and the end of, like, their deck is eight point three feet from my line, my property line.
Yes.
So I was, and please clarify, I don't know if it's possible, but I would like it to be replaced with the current setback clause, which is, I believe, twenty feet. Is that correct? I'm a, I'm a nurse.
Rear setback, no, rear setback is twenty feet.
So the deck should be
This is a pre-existing nonconformity in this situation. When something is pre-existing nonconformity, it is allowed to, they're allowed to make changes and stay, you know, inside of the setback. Okay, now, and how, and we're going to, what scenario, a new patio is going to be, what's the distance?
She's done with the deck.
The deck, I'm sorry.
And the existing's eight three.
Eight three, so it's remaining the same. So there's no changes to the deck.
So you can't reduce the deck size to be more of a
We can't require that.
No.
I see.
Because it's already approved nonconformity for whatever reason.
I was just here for the clarification anyway.
That's understood.
I understand, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. I was, I was looking at the patio, the area that's being changed. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak in behalf of this case? That being the case, I'd like to go forward here and take a look at the finds, effects, and documentation. Do you have your sheet?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just kind of review that and want to check that for any, because this is the information that's going to appear upon any eventual decision that's written for you and submitted to the town clerk. Anyone have any changes on the application and hearing documents? Okay. Recommended findings and conditions based on documents submitted to date. Any changes there? And regarding the proposal for conditions, just recommending the standard three, no construction between June thirtieth and Labor Day, maintaining all the construction vehicles on the site, and of course, violation terms, conditions of the Howard zoning bylaws. That being the case, if everyone is in agreement with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the documents, finds, effects, and conditions of approval as stipulated with no changes.
Second.
Second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to ask for a motion to oppose public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Chris. All those in favor? Okay, voting on the case, Al, Chris, John, Ken, and Marilyn. Like to entertain a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
All right, so the motion by Chris, second by Marilyn. Like to have a vote on the motion, close discussion? Now, entertain discussion, any additional discussion by the board? And by the way, Ms. Spiegel, thank you for coming tonight to, you know, to speak and get things clarified. Excellent idea.
I understand that.
Appreciate it. So I'd ask the clerk
Welcome to join me on the deck for coffee.
That would be great.
All right, so I'd like the head of the clerk to make a motion.
Case number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, twenty-five Seahorse Road. Michelle M. Zettergren through Trevor Kurtz. The owner of the property located at twenty-five Seahorse, assessors map thirty-four parcel S one dash nine in the RR zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from three twenty-five fifty-four A and one on nonconforming structures and uses and three twenty-five attachment two, table two area regulations. In addition, on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw of three twenty-five fifty-four and Master General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six. Granting is consistent with the Gale and related cases as there will be no intensification of the one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformities and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odors, and congestion, any relief not expressly granted hereon to is hereby denied and all work shall be performed in the accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following condition. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June thirtieth and Labor Day of any year. For the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. Third, the, any violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, there will be, and the Howard zoning bylaws as they may be amended from time to time.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, Chris? Any further discussion by the board, rise of motion? Okay, none? And like, folks, like to vote on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, actually, I'm not voting. It's approved, five nothing. You have it.
Thank you.
You do realize it's going to be at, at least a week to ten days before this is submitted to the town clerk and then I believe it's thirty days after that before you can apply for a building permit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. And I'm glad to hear you're getting to give the neighbors for coffee on the deck.
Of course. Thank you all so much.
Our next case is Seventeen Mile Street, so the applicant could join us. And one second here. Okay, what did I do? Did we, folks, I? Here I thought I was organized. Well, sometimes I have a moment. There you go, Al. Here's the next one. Mike, you've got a copy of the staff report, correct?
I did, yep. You think I learned about the mic?
There's a learning curve. Take my word for it.
Okay. Like to have the clerk read the next case.
Case number 2025-39, 17 Mile Street, John and Dawn McNabb through their attorney. His present is Michael Donovan Esquire. The owners of the property located at 17 Miles Street Assessors Map, 13 Parcel W5-B, an RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from 325-54A, 4, and 5, nonconforming structures and the use of 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulations to raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws, 325-54, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. The Howard's Health Department commented that a fully compliant septic system will be required, and a license to start must apply for the permit prior to the building permit sign-off. The Howard's Planning Department Historic Commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. No other comments from other town departments or our budgets were received.
I, okay, that's great. I didn't, I didn't. Okay, let's, uh. Okay, all right. Actually, correction here, there was a letter, are you, are you the Grams?
Yes.
All right, you sent a letter in, you're right, and then you sent another letter in saying that everybody had met and you were all squared away. But that's not the case. We'll, we will hear you. So, all right, so let's, let's just go over that. The, I had done all the write-ups prior to the 24th. That was, that's the main reason for the, the error in, in, in what the clerk read. Okay? So, let me just check, there's a follow-up letter and a, okay, so there's two letters. There's a letter on the 22nd, Dear again to Lisa, Lisa Shaw, who's the secretary. My husband recently came to town hall and spoke with you regarding our concerns about the proposed improvements to 17 Mile Street, John and Dawn McNabb. Specifically, we were worried about changes to the existing driveway and the possibility of it being converted into a shell driveway. Following that conversation, we contacted Michael Donovan to express our concerns. Mr. Donovan responded with a letter and revised site plan, both of which are attached to this email. And I had read that, that thing here. We, he also visited our home to renew, to review the updates with us in person. We are pleased to report that our concerns have been fully addressed. So the letter outlined attachment of the revised site plan, and, and also, so, Mike, Mike, Mr. Donovan sent in a letter to them outlining the changes that will be done to the road, and that they're going to file a new plan, which they have as of this evening. Okay? So then, I received a second letter from your folks. Dear Lisa, we are writing to follow up regarding the upcoming construction of 17 Miles, the budding property to our home. We assume you understand that construction vehicles, equipment will be necessary for the project. However, we're concerned about our driveway. I'd like to clarify from the start that this, that it is important our access not be blocked. Okay? Additionally, we ask that vehicles and equipment not be parked on our lawn. While we realize there may be times when we are inconvenienced during the construction process, we hope that since the owners may not always be present, those working on the property will be made aware of our concerns. We ask every effort be made to keep our passage open and to respect our property. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Sincerely, Roger and Kathy Grant. And my apologies for not updating, you know, the report before the meeting, and thank you for bringing it to my attention. And the, we do have, and I think Tony Donovan will get into it, we do have revised site plan as well, which I believe will probably be part of your, your presentation, Tony.
Yes.
Okay. Tony Donovan, go ahead.
Sure. So, Michael Donovan from Cronin Donovan Law here in Harwich Port, and my clients, John and Dawn McNabb, live in North Carolina, so they're remote on the screen up there as well. So if you have any questions, they'll be there.
Thank you.
So, yes, the, the site plan, so we submitted the, the building plans. This is a raise and replace. They're going to knock down the house, and they're going to rebuild it more centrally located on their lot. The location, hopefully you've been to it, is 17 Mile Street. As you can see from the site plan, it's a very unusual shaped lot. It's actually two parcels where the house is, that the kind of square is one parcel, and then you can see Parcel C is another parcel that's owned by McNabb's as well. Those two go together. And so the only point that touches Mile Street itself is that small point right up at the top there, where it intersects with Mile Street. And then you can see, to the right of Parcel C is labeled Parcel D. You all have, let's make sure we all look at the same plan. You have the plans-
You all have the revised plan?
The plan that's dated August.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Michael.
Oh, sorry.
Can we see that? Can we see the, the drawing? Because we have, we have a very small drawing from-
Well, tell you what, why don't, I'll, I'll retain yours later. You can come up and get my, my plan here, and I will, and take a look at it, and I will share a plan with Ken. Okay? Yes. Right ahead of, there's no really formal procedures here. Bowing is allowed, but there you go. Or Kurtz, however you want to do it. By the way, what is the date of the revised plan?
It says 8/25. So if you look at the-
The original plan is April 20th.
Now, the dates that, that shows on the plan is June 26th was the original.
Where am I coming up with these dates?
Here's June 26th.
Okay.
And at the very end, it should say 8/25 driveway and parcel label.
So the original date of the plan is, is June?
June 26th.
Okay. And the revision is 8/25.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So-
Actually, I want to take one moment so the folks can take a look at the plan while you're talking. Uh, folks? Folks? I'm just going to give you a minute to talk, and then I want him to speak, be able to, but you can, do you need, do you need more time to review this?
No, I, I-
Just want to know before you begin speaking.
He has a small plan, too, and he won't do a lot.
Okay, great. Sure, I understand. Just want to give you a moment to look at the big plan before Mr. Donovan continues, that's all.
If you could just start at the beginning now, we appreciate that.
That'd be great, Michael. You can do, you know, rewind.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, it's 17 Mile Street. As I said, there's a big square in the middle where the house is, that is a lot, and that's labeled Parcel B. And then there's a kind of triangular shaped lot labeled Parcel C that has the point out onto Mile Street. So that B and C is what's owned by the McNabb's. To the right of Parcel C is Parcel D, and that's owned by the Grams.
Okay, one more time here?
D.
Okay.
D. And then if you follow down Parcel D, you come to another rectangle that's labeled right-of-way.
Right.
That parcel there is owned by the Grams as well. And then the Graham's house is-
Right at the end.
The end of that right-of-way on that portion there. So, the original plans, everything was situated as it was, but there were labels with respect to the driveways that were mislabeled, miscommunications of what was being done. Like it said shell driveway, and it was a gravel driveway. So the only changes for this 8/26, this new plan, there's no changes to any of the setbacks, there's no changes to the position of the house at all, and there's no changes to the position of the driveway at all. The labels, as my email had indicated, that the dotted lines were there before, and they're still there, and that's the existing driveway. And then we removed where it said shell instead of-
Yes.
We removed that. It said 10 feet wide, we removed that. It is what it is. And then there was a line that said existing driveway to be removed, which was never the intention, and should not have been in the original. So we removed that. And then the, we put the dark line, where the dotted line turns and goes into the McNabb's property, there's a dark line, and then you'll see it says proposed driveways and walkways. That's what's going to be added to the existing driveway, so they can get into the garage, the new location of the garage. Okay?
So is it, is it going to be like that?
So, so that's the changes that were made to the original plan. Again, nothing to do with site coverages, building coverages, setbacks, building height, any of the things that, you know, we're here for tonight with respect from a zoning perspective. So, and, and as we've kind of read from the letters, the Grams contacted us, and that's what precipitated these changes to the labeling and the driveways and so on, to make it crystal clear what was what. And we went out, made the changes, and then when I met with them again, we, the Parcel D and the right-of-way weren't listed on there, so we put those labels on there as well to make it clear what each parcel was. And so I believe that's, that's been addressed. I'll, I'll address the parking of vehicles at the end, but I believe as far as from a site plan coverage, that's there. So if we now move on to, you know, the actual, the demolition of the house and the, and the reconstruction of a new house, my paperwork hopefully makes it clear, there's a lot of things that are already conforming and are going to remain conforming. The frontage, the side setback on the southeast, the rear setback, the building coverage, the site coverage, the building height, all of those things are conforming now and will stay conforming. The lot size is obviously not conforming, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's just going to stay as is. The third category I have there is what's nonconforming and actually is going to be changed from nonconforming to conforming, and that's the northwest side setback. That's right now 14.7, and going to be increased to 20.4. And then the last one is the front setback, which is nonconforming right now at 14, and it will remain nonconforming, but we'll reduce that nonconformity because it will go to 16.1. So we're not creating any new nonconformity, we're eliminating one nonconformity, and we're reducing a nonconformity. And then the last component that I would note is that we're not increasing any existing nonconformity with respect to habitable space, because we're removing a lot of existing houses that's inhabitable space now. And I, I did the calculations, it was like 329 square feet that was in the setbacks, and now they'll just be 82. So we're saying we're reducing that nonconformity from a standpoint of habitable space as well. So that's the setup. As you can see, you know, the house now has been positioned much more in the center of the lot, and that's what's creating the increase in setback areas all the way around the house. I put in my papers, and, and Mr. Chair, you and I discussed, that we believe because there's no either new nonconformity or increase in any nonconformity, or increase in any habitable space within the setbacks, we believe that this pursuant to the case law that I've cited in here under Chapter 48, Section 6, the second except clause, that the building commissioner should be issuing this as a building permit as of right. It appears to us that the building commissioner believes because it's nonconforming, and there is still a nonconformity with the front setback, that it has to go to ZBA. And I would submit, for the reasons I cited in my papers, I won't belabor it, that, that that's not the case, and that it is entitled to a building permit as of right. And I put that in the papers, and I, I believe Mr. Chair said he's sent that to town council, because this is coming up, this isn't a one-off, this seems to be coming up over and over again. And I'd like to, it would be helpful to get a ruling from the town council, and if we don't need to be filing these applications and taking up time at these hearings and doing this, seems like that clarity might be worthwhile. That being said, we're here tonight, and we would submit that this is ripe for a special permit, that there's clearly not any substantial more detriment to the entire neighborhood from this plan than the existing structure that's there now. It won't create additional impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. It actually is improving the setbacks, and it's positioning the house more centrally located on that lot. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, last, last thing. For the Grams, yes, they, I mean, we, the McNabb's fully recognize and have talked with them that this is the Grams, this driveway is the way that they get to their house. So there clearly cannot be any construction vehicles blocking anything there whatsoever. There's no dispute about that. Nor is, are there construct, going to be construction vehicles parked on their land. So, you know, that, that's kind of goes without saying in all of these cases, that you can't park on the neighbor's land. So I think that's just kind of a given, but the McNabb's certainly do that, and I don't believe they've, they haven't finalized their contractor yet, but you know, once that's done, we'll certainly provide that information to whatever names or butters, and if there's any issues or whatever, that they'll have the contact information. Besides McNabb's contact information, also the actual, you know, construction company's contact information, so that anything could be worked out. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay. So given a favorable, given a favorable opinion tonight from the board on motion, what is your timeframe?
They'd like to start this call.
Now, I realize with the centering the house on the, on the new proposed scenario, it, it seems that you've, you freed up, you know, land around, you know, the existing house is very tight to the driveway.
Yes.
So one question I have here is, is I have less concerns about construction than I have as far as demolition. And being able to demolish, you know, raise this house, existing house, and be able to do it without, you know, blocking the street and actually driveway, and I'm not quite sure how- not quite sure how all this happened to begin with, as far as, okay, I'll ask that question in a minute, just for our histrionics, and, and, uh, maybe you can fill in for Bill, he's not here tonight.
Yeah.
We'd better understand this, well, how this happened. But how are you proposing to take the house down without, and keeping materials and construction vehicles on the site?
Well, I think, um, you know, they're gonna have to take down probably, not demolish the whole thing, but take it down in pieces, I would suspect, but I think we're getting far field. I'm not sure exactly how physically it's gonna be done, but I think that there's plenty of space on, on here to be taking it down, maybe not all at once, it may have to be taken down, you know, a section of it and then that trucked away. Once, obviously, once you take a section down, that provides, frees up some other space.
Now parcel, parcel C is currently, a lot of it's tree line, correct?
Correct.
All right, so it'd be a shame to take down a lot of trees to, you know, for materials, so I hate to see that happen. Are, is this gonna, are you gonna maintain the, the trees on parcel C?
I, I don't know, I don't think decisions have been made about whether anything's gonna be taken down or not taken down at this point. As I said, they, they don't have a contractor that's been lined up yet, so there isn't a whole game plan that's fully baked at this point.
How do you get frontage on a driveway? Just out of curiosity here.
The, the, the right-of-way under, I think I cited it, the section 325 dash 2, um, talks about a invalid right-of-way serves as frontage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so as, uh, I think I did send out, I don't know if I, I believe I copied everybody on it, I did send out a letter to the town attorney, uh, for comments on this case regarding, you know, the option for the board to, um, just override the commissioner's decision and, uh, direct him to, you know, grant a, a, i- issue a building permit. I did have a brief conversation with the attorney today, uh, her final decision had not been, been finalized, and a few minutes ago I checked my, my phone, and I do not have, uh, and Lisa, do you have any?
I actually, Brian, on that point is, I think the building commissioner's judgment was proper based on sub-paragraph four of 325 dash 54.
Yep.
Because it, it basically says it's, it's by right, as long as the proposed new construction will conform to current setbacks and coverage in the zoning district for which the lot is located, and there's one setback that will not comply.
Okay.
But it goes on to the next section to basically say it can be granted by special permit by the Board of Appeals. Um, and again, not to make you nervous, it, it, it appears to have complied with all the requirements of that section, you know, for the special permit.
What, what's, what's in the note in again? I'm sorry.
Uh, 325 dash 54 is non-conforming structures and uses. Sub-paragraph four says a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family residential structure made by right be demolished and replaced with a new structure on the same site, provided that, A, the proposed new construction will conform to current setbacks and coverage for the zoning district in which the lot is located, which it doesn't.
Right.
So I think that's why the building commissioner...
Commissioner turned it down.
Said you need a special permit, which is the next section, which is section five, which then says, you know, the standard will not be substantially more detrimental, um, and I think there's a couple of things where it has to not increase, uh, some non-conformities and it actually has to reduce at least one of the non-conformities, which is the setback encroachment, which to me it looks like has been complied with. So I do think to do this as designed, a special permit's required. Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, so I, I agree with that. It, it's under that section, it doesn't fit, but my argument is a different argument, which is the mass case law, the courts have decided, just like the Gale case, the courts decide, yeah, that, that we just, the courts have decided, doesn't matter what your Harwich bylaw says, if it's pre-existing non-conforming, here's what the rules are, and that's what this case law is saying, just like, let's say, for example, when they passed the statute about ADUs, it's still on the books that Harwich has these rules and it don't fit with them, but those aren't enforceable anymore. So that's why my argument is citing case law, not the actual Harwich bylaw provisions, because I would agree that under that bylaw, he doesn't have the authority to do it.
That's right, and you cited that case law in your review, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forty-eight.
Yep.
Six.
No, no, that one I saw. Okay. All right, excellent, okay. Uh, I do, as far as going for the special permit, uh, would agree that, uh, I think it does, does meet the requirements of, of Gale, um, but, uh, let's see what the rest of the board has to say. Chris?
Yeah, I think it satisfies all the requirements of Gale, so I have no questions.
I agree.
I agree as well.
My only question, uh, would be, would you prefer to have a continuance? Would you prefer to have a special permit? Because a continuance might potentially lead to your argument, it would solve this issue, but it's gonna delay you for at least a month.
Right, yeah, so I would prefer it to go forward as special permit, yeah.
All right, thank you for that, Joe. I have no questions.
I have no question. Okay. I do appreciate you making me pull my book out. Well, I always like to learn every meeting.
Yeah. That's the book we didn't pull.
Is there any in the public that would like to speak regarding this case? If so, if you'd go to the podium and then state your, uh, your name and, and address, and, uh, then fill out a form as well, if you have an opportunity.
Uh, yes, hello. I'm Patricia Moriarty, I'm Nancy Lyons's sister and power of attorney, and she lives at 21 Miles Street, which owns property at 21 Miles Street. So as in a butter, we had some concerns, some of which the Graham's have already addressed, about, um, the driveway being so small, and there are trees that when we went and looked tonight, there were some lower branches that we're concerned might be impacted by trucks. I understand now from what Mr. Donovan said that there isn't a contractor right now lined up to do this, but I would hope that we would, um, we just received notice a couple of days ago in the mail because, just because that's what we did, so I haven't had a lot of time to look at this.
Sure.
And think about it, but we are concerned about this, the, um, the weight and the size of the trucks, and can, can they typically be limited as to the size? Because on construction sites, you see such huge trucks that they could really damage that driveway and the trees. That, that's not my property, it's not my sister's property, but it's a concern because the, um, we don't wanna see those trees.
I took a picture, I took a picture of the tree line myself when I was there.
Oh, you do? Okay. Yeah. Cause it's, yeah, I'm her sister as well, Nancy's and Mary Ellen's sister, and, yeah, I mean, they're just beautiful trees and, and, and they hang a little low and it just doesn't look like this room. Is there a requirement for truck size or... Because when you were talking about the raising the building and then bringing the materials out, there's gonna be a lot of back and forth about with materials coming on that very narrow road or driveway.
I would agree.
And, and then, and another concern we have is where is everyone going to park who's working on this project? Will they be parking on Miles Street? And there is, that's kind of a dangerous curve that comes off of 28 and then comes right up to that area, and if there are a lot of cars parked there, that's not gonna be good for the town and for people living there. I don't know where all the cars and trucks are gonna be, and I don't know if there's a way to access, there's like, um, like where the real estate office is behind there, there's a, a little plaza, almost a little business area right as you come in, um, Miles Street from 28. There's, what is the name of that company, that real estate, you know? But, but this, they have a parking lot that's fairly large, and I, I didn't know if it would access their property or not, or if there could be an opening made to create...
I'm not familiar with the parking lot you're describing.
No, okay. Um, we, we just really have concerns about size of trucks, the size of the loads, whether the loads will be overhanging, that we would hope that they would be contained and covered and tied down if necessary, and I think that's a message more for the contractor than maybe this process. Will we have, um, any communication from the contractor? Once the contractor is hired, will, will we be notified?
Yes, if you want, we can talk afterwards, we can get an address to send to...
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, certainly.
Because we, we just wanna be sure that they're going to be respectful of the property because there's, my sister's house and then the house next to her, and then the Graham's house, will all be impacted quite a bit during the construction, and we're concerned about noise and dust, but the really size of trucks and damage to trees and anything that could fall off trucks if, if they're not properly tied to the truck. So, thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns. I think that was, that was it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak regarding this case? Please. If you need, go to the podium.
Roger Graham, uh, 19 Miles Street, and for clarification, we just had a huge tree taken out in front of our house, and they brought in a truck that had to be 10 foot wide, 10 foot high, and they actually had to hold up the wire to get by the house to come in and to take the tree down. I know for a fact there's 12 feet between the trees on the way in, on the driveway.
Sure.
So, you can get big vehicles in there and...
But where do you put...
So you're saying you can, you can now get a big vehicle in there?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
And it didn't harm the driveway.
Okay.
It's basically a concrete driveway and it's been there for 25 years, so...
All right, thank you. Yeah, anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this?
You on it?
Oh, yes, uh, can you, um, unmute, uh, John and, and Don McNab, please?
I don't think they're muted.
They are unmuted.
All right, go ahead, folks. John and Don, do you have something to say? All right, we can't hear them.
They're probably muted out there.
She's not speaking.
Did you mute on your end?
Are you, are you muted?
From your computer?
She's not speaking.
Can't hear you. You're not moo-, you're not muted at this end, I just wanna check your computer that you didn't, that you're, you unmuted yourself on your, on your laptop.
We can't hear you.
Do they have your cellphone, Mike?
Uh, I have her cellphone. Good thinking.
All right.
It's our failsafe.
Your attorney's gonna give you a call on your cellphone, Mrs. McNab, so perhaps, uh, you can speak into that and he can hold it up to the mic. You're, apparently you're not on speed dial, I just want you to know that.
(laughing).
There are probably other clients on speed dial, so I would have a discussion with your attorney.
Hi, hi, yeah. I'm gonna, yeah, we can hear you. I'm gonna put you on to the microphone here.
And put that on speaker, Mike.
Yeah, there might be some feedback. Okay.
Okay, okay. Then I hope you can hear me now. (inaudible).
Sorry. Okay, that's, that's not working.
That's not working, sorry, this doesn't work.
All right, the, the feedback, there's too much feedback.
Try, try now.
Why don't you...
Is this better now, Michael?
Try it now.
Now, without the feedback?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, my name's John McNab, my wife is with me, Dawn. Thank you for those comments, and, and we will be, we will talk to the demolition contractor, we are talking to someone now, his name is John Martin, and we can relay these concerns about the size of the trucks and to minimize any damage to trees, we're all for doing as, as much as we can. From what we discussed, the demolition was, let's say, up to five days, so it also isn't, isn't weeks, which I think can help. And just to say, we're, we're very excited to be at Harwich Port, my wife and I have been going there for over 50 years, even before we're married, we're happy to have this house, and to, to build a, a better house, a nicer house, and, uh, yeah, to have a nice house on this piece of property when it's all done, that, uh, we can all enjoy and as neighbors, it'll, it'll look better than it does today. So we're grateful for that, and, uh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good thinking. I didn't come up with that. I have it sticky with the number right there in case something happens, and I didn't think about it.
Just from my education, when you have a right-of-way, because you folks don't own, it's a right-of-way, you don't own that property where your driveway is, and where there are trees and so forth, and that type of right-of-way, um, what are, what are your rights regarding tree removal or anything else on, on your right-of-way that you have, you know, for the Graham's?
Well, they have a right to use the right-of-way.
Yes.
It's not a crystal clear, well, how much use does that mean? That means it can be 12 feet wide, or 10 feet wide, or 15 feet wide. This more recent right-of-ways will draft it into the right-of-way and have a lot more detail to it. This, these right-of-ways are very old, so it just says you have a right-of-way, so it doesn't get into the details of who's maintaining it and how wide is it and tall.
We were told about the house, they, the people had a right-of-way to drive over that section.
Okay.
They didn't have a right-of-way to change things, but they had a right of way to drive over it. The people before them built a fence, so they didn't ever use it because they built a fence so you couldn't drive over it. So, um, it's, it's a change, but they have the right-of-way, so we know trying to...
We, we don't govern this, but once you, once you, uh, McNab, pick a contractor, if there's any plans on timeframe as well as, uh, what adjustments might be needed to the right-of-way to get everything, equipment down, I would like the fact that you folks do speak with the, the Graham's and, you know, the butter regarding, you know, concerns ahead of time, so that they're dialed in.
Yes, the McNab's will, certainly.
I would appreciate that. Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? And, uh, before going forward, again, John asked a question, I actually candid that you'd prefer to have the, the special permit tonight versus going, waiting on a continuance to hear from the attorney.
Correct, yeah.
All right, okay. All right, we're now going to just confirm the, uh, documents and findings of facts...
Yeah.
Regarding the application hearing documents, the one change I have so far is that the number three, certified site plan, uh, originally is dated June 26 and revised plan on August 25th.
Yes.
Is all in agreement on that? Okay. Everything else?
I...
August 21st, weren't they? August 25th?
And that was stamped 20, and that was stamped 25.
Yep. And then number four, you bolded June...
Oh, yeah, I wasn't quite sure, I couldn't read the day.
It's very tiny, yeah, 26.
It's the 26?
Yeah. And that was the only change, I had everything else look accurate to me.
Okay. And on findings of facts, uh, let's see, we're going to, uh, well, I'm gonna, if I was a finding of fact, we're still gonna keep number 16 in there on your narrative regarding the argument on the accept clause, that was part of the, the finding of facts that, that's what you felt.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Are there any other additions, changes, or corrections to the recommended findings and conditions based on the documents?
Not here.
Anybody? Okay. All right. And as far as the, I think it, regarding the three motions, um, we're, uh, looking for the, the three clauses, I would say here, that maintaining vehicles, no construction during, uh, June and 30th and Labor Day, uh, no construction vehicles be parked on the applicant's property and not any, not any public street or road, and the violation terms these conditions, et cetera, on the, on the Harwich bylaws.
I would just ask as to the second one, um, I don't know, that, that may be...
Where are you gonna put, how, where are you gonna put the trucks?
It'd have to be, you know, either on Miles Street at some point or it, somewhere else. I don't know what other street, Village Green, or...
You can get permission from that real estate company and they're parking it.
I mean, I, I just don't know right now, and I just don't know that there's not gonna I just don't know right now and I just don't know that there's not gonna be a time that they are not gonna be able to fit all the vehicles on the lot.
Now, the main thing is gonna be on destruction, raising of the house is gonna be the main issue as far as, after that gets raised, from looking at it, I think you're gonna have ample room to park the vehicles during construction. Would you agree?
Here and then across, yeah. Yeah, I think it would. And then you could also obviously put something in the garage if need be, yeah. So you're thinking about, you know, a timeframe?
I don't know. The main thing is, obviously, the one major butter that's gonna be, could impact would be the Graham's. And I can tell at 19. You folks planning a vacation this fall? I'm just throwing it out, that on a timeframe where they can take the house down.
Well, Mr. Chairman, would we consider?
Paid vacation.
Would we consider no parking on, or no blocking of ingress and egress?
Yeah.
Versus, I think that makes more sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's the life of the approved project. Construction vehicles will not...
Block the ingress or egress of the neighborhood property. Parking on the street there would be...
I would, I mean, parking on Mile Street?
Yeah.
You don't wanna park, you can't park on Mile Street. Not happening.
Okay.
At least in my opinion. I think that area there is very difficult. We all agree with that, or?
Let me just give you that. We're probably set up. Once the part of that building is taken down, not the entire building's gonna come down immediately. Can't it quickly be brought down to that right-hand side? Because in the back, it opens up.
It opens up again, right. Yeah, I don't...
Isn't there some way the contractor would have? Unfortunately, there's no contractors, so they can't speak.
Speak right now, yeah.
But there should be a way to get those contractor trucks into that property.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying. Again, I just don't know, like, where the driveway stops, is there more room back there that they can put them? I'm sure they'll figure it out, I mean...
Well, there's a fence back there.
The fence is coming down.
Yeah, so they could just back up past that fence.
Yeah.
I mean, I personally, I think the means and methods are up to the contractor and all their...
I see that, but...
You know, I agree with the egress, not blocking egress, but besides that.
All right, so if a life...
It's worked out by others.
So the life of the approved project, construction vehicles will not... Will not block egress on...
Well, to, we just put the address right, to 19 Mile Street.
All right, block egress to 19 Mile Street. All right, so construction, the life of the approved project, construction vehicles will not block egress on the right of way to 19 Mile Street. We all agree with that? And will not be parked on...
Mile Street.
All right, we, is the board members in agreement with that statement? Okay. With all those changes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the documents, findings of facts, and conditions of approval as stipulated and revised.
Is that a motion?
I made the motion. I'll take a second if I can. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
No move. Second.
Vote for the closing, folks.
Aye.
Okay, voting in the case would be Al, myself, Chris, John, and Ken. I'd like to make a motion to close discussion.
No move. Second.
On the vote of the motion to close discussion?
Aye.
I'd like to have the clerk read a motion. And when you get to item two, Al, I'll read it, okay?
All right.
I'll read too. Yeah, I do, actually. I mean, the ladies might give you back theirs, but I'll take this one.
All right, case number 2025-39, 17 Mile Street, John and Don McNabb. Through their attorneys, William Crowe and Michael Donovan, his squires. Property is located 17 Mile Street, assesses map, 13 parcel W5B in the RM zoning district. Applicant has been granted a special permit, 325-54A, 4, and 5 non-conforming structures and uses, and 325 attachment to table 2 area regulation to raise and replace the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-54 and Mass. General Law 48, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the Gale and related cases as they will be. No intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And as a, the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereon is denied. And all work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Mr. Chair?
Oh, sorry, can you put that clue in? The life of the approved project, construction vehicles will not block egress on the right of way to 19 Mile Street and will not be parked on Mile Street.
All right, a violation of terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Any further discussion by the board or applicant? Okay. All righty. And... I'd like to second that motion, please.
Second.
Ken? And a vote of the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
We're all set. And thank you everyone for your participation.
Thank you.
Hopefully...
Now we can hear him?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
You can hear us now? Thank you.
Folks, we're just gonna take a five-minute break.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Dig it up. I had her dig it up, but she dug up the, they had been historic back in 2019, and that's what she copied. Yeah, oh, okay.
Where does he go?
All right, Al, if you read the next case, please.
Case number 2025-4071 Pleasant Street, Timothy and Jean Kelly. Through their attorneys, William Crowe and Michael Donovan. The owner's of the property located 71 Pleasant Street, assesses map, 14 parcel W2-0 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, 325-54A, 4, and 5 non-conforming structures and uses, and 325 attachment to table 2 area regulation to raise and replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to Howard zoning bylaws 325-54 and the Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. The Howard's Health Department communicated that fully compliant septic system will be required by a licensed installer, must apply for a permit prior to building's permit site-off. The Howard's Planning Department and Historic Commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. No other comments from other town departments or others were received.
Actually...
Stand corrected.
All right, today... Okay, what, all right, so we did receive in a comment from the Historic Commission that 71 Pleasant Street is a structure built in 1890, it's over 100 years old, and needs to go to historic.
Yeah, if I, I just may, we did go to historic in the last couple of months and got it passed. Do you have that?
Then I have a letter here, wait a minute. I'm a little confusing this, Lisa, but help me through here. I have a letter dated April 11, 2019.
Yeah, that's, that's the wrong one. They went to historic back in 2019, but it was a different project. And so we went to historic again. I did it, just in the last couple of months.
All right, so you're...
So I will pull it out and send it.
Just, we're making you aware of it.
Right.
I don't need to know.
Correct, yeah. We'll deal with the Historic Commission about it, get that cleared out.
You're not gonna get a building permit unless they sign off on it if required.
I just wanted to say that for the record over here, yeah.
Yeah, I just, 2019 is a good year for me, but I'm glad to see your connection here. Okay. All right. I'd like to have the applicant introduce themselves or representatives, and assisting you in this case.
Hi, Michael Donovan from Crowe &amp; Donovan. And with me is one of the homeowners, Tim Kelly. Oh, he moved on me, over here.
So Kelly, you can join Attorney Donovan if you like.
Not required.
Not required. I mean, I understand if you don't.
I won't take that personally, yeah. Okay, so the Kelly's house is on Pleasant Street. It's just one house in from Bank Street, so it's on that end of Pleasant Street. And as you had just read, it was an older house built in the 1890s. The original structure was a small house in the middle. Since that time, not to bore you with the details, but there's a lot of additions that were put on, on various parts of it that make it very disjointed. So there, and it's not, it's set way back from the road. I assume you've probably been there towards the back of the property. So they'd like to demolish that house, move the location kind of more to the center of the lot, which then also gives them the ability to put a pool in the back, as you could see on the site plan. As far as the site plan, we submitted the original one and then we submitted a revised one. It has a date revised, 8/20/2025.
I don't think I have that.
It's in that same package?
It's in the same...
We submitted it at the same time of the last case with the revised plan.
That was on...
Okay, all right, I'm gonna take this one here. Appreciate it.
And what I would say is, like the last case, it does not in any way affect anything in the compliance, zoning compliance table. Doesn't affect any setbacks, doesn't affect any coverages, doesn't affect any building height. The only thing it did was it increased the size of the pool and a little bit of the shape of the patio, I think it is. But the pool is still, it was before and still is 21 feet from both setbacks in that area. So there's no need to kind of pour through it compared to the old one, other than just seeing that the pool, I think it was like nine feet wide, and it's like 12 feet wide now. So it doesn't affect, again, any of the zoning portion of it. So again, in my papers I laid out, there's, you know, quite a bit that's conforming, staying conforming, the front setback, building coverage, site coverage, building height, those are all conforming and will stay conforming. The non-conforming, there's lot size and frontage that are both staying the same. And the east setback, 13.9, is staying the same as well. And then there's a non-conforming that is changing to conforming. So the rear setback to the house was 14.1, and now it's 27.6. That was all because of moving the house back further towards the Pleasant Street. And then there was one reducing of a non-conformity. The west side setback was 9.1, and the proposed is 15.4. So it's still non-conforming, but it's reducing that non-conformity that already existed. So in sum, it will not create any new non-conformities, it will not increase any non-conformities. It will, though, increase the building height in some habitable area within the setback on the sides. So unlike kind of the last one here, we would agree that this would be a special permit because there is some increase of habitable space within a setback. And so we would submit with the no new non-conformities and the fact that it's changing one non-conformity into a conformity and reducing another non-conformity. We would say that this case, again, is one that falls within the parameters of Gale, that it would not be substantially more detrimental to the entire neighborhood than the existing non-conformity, would not create additional negative impacts with traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. It's taking a project and moving the house into more to the middle of the lot in keeping with the neighborhood. Answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Time frame?
They'd like to start this fall.
And I believe you can maintain all of these... And I believe you can maintain all the vehicles on the site?
Yes, they can, yes.
Actually, I didn't, really didn't have any questions regarding this project. Looks straightforward, and I believe it does meet all the conditions of Gail. Chris?
No questions.
Marilyn?
No questions.
Ditto, no questions.
John? Oh, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
It doesn't, it's not gonna change the outcome, but I still don't understand, it happens before, how the pre-existing average grade can change from the existing to the proposed. It's, has to be the same number, right?
Where are you referring?
On the building height calculation on the site drawing. Existing, pre-existing average grade on the existing calculation's 18.6, and on the proposed it's 18.9.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm gonna assume that that's just a...
It still would be compliant at 29.9, but it's a lot closer.
Closer, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how those numbers could be...
Yeah, I don't know, other than maybe it was a typo.
Yeah. Well, besides that.
Yeah.
I have a further question.
I didn't pick up on that. So we are going with 18.9, though? Okay.
Well, even if you go with 18.6, it would be 29.9, so it would be a tenth of a foot short of the maximum allowed.
So it's still conforming?
It's still conforming, but it's... We had this on another...
Excellent. Okay, I wanted to... Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this case? Any other questions by the board? I don't think there are any. All right, so I'd like to refer you to the staff report.
Yeah.
So on, in the application hearing documents for, on the item four, we're gonna, the original was May 7, and revised August 20.
Yes.
Okay. Other than that, are there any other changes to the documents?
I had no changes.
Regarding findings and conditions of fact, anybody have any, any changes, suggestions? Did I say that, Mike?
Yeah, I had none.
Okay. Regarding the stipulations or the conditions, I'm gonna go with the standard three. If everyone's in agreement, regarding the project being in life for construction, it cannot be between June 30 during the exterior demolition or exterior construction between June 30 and Labor Day. Keep all construction vehicles on site. And of course, we don't want to violate any of the Howard's laws. All right, based upon that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the documents, find the facts, and conditions of approval as stipulated and revised.
Second.
Second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 6-0. Okay, the chair asks for a motion to close public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Second by Marilyn. Vote on the closing.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, voting in this case would be Al, Chris, John, Ken, and Marilyn. I'd like to make a motion, I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
Don't move.
Second.
Ken, the motion, Al seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have the clerk read the motion.
Case number 2025-40, 71 Pleasant Street, Timothy and Jean Kelly. Their attorneys William Kroll and Michael Donovan. The owners of the property located at 71 Pleasant Street assesses map 14 parcel W2-0. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-54A, 4, and 5 nonconforming structures and uses. 325 attachment to table 2 area regulation will raise and replace a preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-54 in Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6. The granting is consistent with the Gail and related cases, as there will be no intensification of one or more...
There will be intensification.
What's that?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There will be an intensification, my error. On one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformities, and no substantial detriment to the pre, to the entire neighborhood or pre-existing nonconforming lot, and the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here under is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new new landscape between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. That the life of the project, of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public street or road. Any violations of conditions of the special permit may be enforced through the violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Can I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, Chris? Any further discussion by the board? See you then. I'd like to, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Mike, I'm assuming you have a staff report for the next case on Eastern Avenue?
I do, yes.
Glad you do, I gotta find mine. There you go. Okay, I'd like to have the clerk read the next case, please.
Case number 2025-41, 9 Eastern Ave., Laurie and Harold, Laurie, Harold. Their attorney William Kroll and Michael Donovan. The owners of the property located at 9 Eastern Ave. assesses map 6 parcel G4-14 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit in 325-54A, 4, and 5 nonconforming structures and uses. 325 attachment to table 2 area regulation. 325 attachment to table 3 heightened bulk regulation to raise and replace a preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325-54 in Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6. The Howard Health Department commented that setbacks to the septic must be maintained. A passing Title V report, passing a Title V report must be submitted by a licensed installer prior to the building permit sign-off. Conservation Department commented that the southern part of the property may be within 100 feet of the buffer to wetland resource area. Buffer zone is not shown on the site plan. Howard's Planning Department and Historic Commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns and no other comments from town department or boroughs were received.
I'd like to have the applicant or representative introduce themselves and those assisting you in the presentation.
Hi, Michael Donovan from Kroll &amp; Donovan. I'm here, Laurie or Ms. Harold is not able to attend tonight. Her husband's in hospital, so she just wanted to let you know. She's obviously very interested, but it wasn't for lack of interest that she couldn't make it.
Oh, sure, I see. Sorry, she's in hospital.
So this house is in Eastern Ave., which, as you know, is a kind of dense area there. This house in particular has a garage that's half on their lot and half on the neighbor's lot. It's quite interesting. That, that garage isn't...
It's a shared garage?
Yeah, it is, yeah. It hasn't, so that's not being touched as part of this. I think at some point, something's gonna have to happen there probably, but right now, we're just dealing with the house itself, and this is a demolition and a rebuild of the house. And I've set forth again that there's, you know, conforming, the first category is the side setback and the building coverage and the building height are all conforming and remain so. Nonconforming and no changes to the lot size and the frontage. And then there's four nonconformities that are all being reduced with this project. The front setbacks going from 8.5 feet to 12.2. The rear setbacks, 15.6 to 16.1. The north side setback, 14.3 to 14.7. And the site coverage is going from 61.9 to 61. So not large, but, but they're heading in the right direction. They're making, you know, slight improvements to those. Obviously, it's not a big lot. There's not gonna be big numbers anywhere here, but it's, it's making it better than it is at this point now. We would say it's not creating any new conformities and it's not increasing any nonconformities, but it will decrease some of the nonconformities. Again, we believe that for the same reasons that discussed earlier, having my papers here, that we believe because it's not increasing or intensifying any nonconformity, that this is something that a building permit should be issued by right. And I think, you know, we're, talked about that. We'll get some ruling, at least some opinion from town council on that view. And we'd like to proceed with a special permit because we think it's, this is something that's appropriate for a special permit here for the same exact reasons as to why it would be appropriate for a permit by right. That there's no new nonconformity, there's no increase in any existing nonconformities, and in fact, there's reduction of nonconformities here. So overall, the proposed work will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the entire neighborhood than the existing house is. And there won't be negative impacts on noise and odor and construction, I mean congestion due to this project. And that's all I have at this point. Answer any questions that you may have.
So to, again, further my education. You have a garage that's co-owned, sitting on top of the lot line and shared by your butter and them. Looking at the future, how does one establish setback?
There's a zero setback right there. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's right on the line.
Yeah, no, I...
Is that what you mean? Yeah, I don't have a great answer to that. I think the answer is that there is no setback right there.
Yeah, I just, I just, looking at, you know, intensification of a pre-existing nonconformity, you know, that's about as pre-existing, I mean, as far as, you know, for, you know, what is, what would be the intensification there? And, and could that house eventually in the future be on the lot?
If you go up. I mean, I think that, generally speaking, they talk about if you have one floor, but if you put a second floor over it, it adds habitable space. That would be an intensification of, of that nonconformity.
I, I do agree that it'd be, this particular situation here in the raise and replace, it actually, in a way, though it's in the motions and so forth, it's, and any question of the Gail case applies because we're not intensifying anything.
Right.
Though it's, it's probably stated in the special permit, I know at the moment, but other than that, I see there's no reason why it shouldn't be approved for, you know, at least from my point of view, regarding a special permit. And unless you want to wait for judgment from the attorney, I'd rather pursue things tonight on that versus going for...
Yeah, I think like the other one, I think I'd prefer to just move forward on the special appeal, a special permit under the Gail case and related cases.
Yeah, and again, where there is any intensification, I'm just not quite sure if they're actually, it does apply. John?
I agree. I don't have any questions.
No questions.
The only, when you get to the conditions, though, is, you know, down the campground area and everything, I don't see any way they're not gonna, they're gonna be able to park everything on the, on the lot. I don't think it's worth putting that restriction in because it's, practically, it's impossible.
Yeah, I would agree. So Al, we'll be, if everyone agrees, we'll be taking out two?
Yes.
And actually, Al, I have to point out that there will be no intensification of existing nonconformities. Right, yeah, so. All right, you have your, oh, I'm sorry, I have no other, Al, do you have any questions?
No.
Marilyn?
No.
Chris? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this, this case? Yes. Why don't you please step forward and for the podium, if you possibly, after you speak, write down your name and address?
Sure.
You can tell me as well?
I'm frank guessing. I live across the street at 10 Eastern Avenue.
Okay.
I've owned property on Eastern Avenue for 52 years, and I've been living there for 20, 20 years plus. I support the project. I think it'll be a nice improvement. Eastern Avenue is basically one car length wide. If you want to eliminate this restriction, where, where would you expect these people to park, on Eastern Avenue? If you're gonna omit that, uh...
You raise an excellent point.
I mean, I, I can't get out of my house when, when the mailman comes, when, when these people come to cut the lawn. We have to wait. And if I'm heading to a medical appointment, it's a very, a very tiresome wait. I support the project. I, I hope you approve the project. I would personally like to see you leave that clause in there, John.
You know, I think it's, it gets into semantics, and I agree with you. I just think, at some point, someone's gonna park. I, I like what we did on the other one where we said they're not gonna obstruct.
Right.
You know, where if someone needs to get in or out, they're gonna understand they have to move a truck or something. I just think, until the demolition's over, realistically, I hear what you're saying, sir, but people are gonna park on the street for at least for hours or so.
And we have someone else who wants to speak regarding this case.
Richard Santos, next door on 3. I don't agree, I mean, it's, I, there's room to comply with the regulations. The parking should be on the property.
Is this a public road or a private road?
It's a private road.
It's a private, yeah.
Stop there then. We don't have any thought.
It's always a little bit of a gray area. On a private road, there isn't a lot of authority by this board. However, I would like to see the fact that the applicant agreed, and I'll put in the condition, the fact that to not obstruct, as we did the last time.
Yep.
You know, the egress and right away of, of any resident on Eastern Avenue.
Yep.
But I'm not quite sure how you're gonna accomplish that.
Well, I mean, I think, you see, as if there's a driveway, you're not gonna park like right where they're backing out, right? You'd park at an area that they could get out and then go by. And, and I mean, there's, there's gonna be, this is gonna be a total demolition, so the front part here, they're gonna be able to park, you know, parallel to Eastern Street cars there, plus on the side, so...
Eventually, that's what I'm saying. I think eventually it's easier, but...
Yeah, right at the beginning, yeah.
Just try to picture in my head. I know we can say that realistically.
But I, but I think, you should say like you have half, you have a car half on your lot, half not, you still can get by as opposed to if you're parking fully on Eastern Avenue, yeah.
I do like the don't obstruct traffic modification. That's functional.
Brian?
Yes.
I'm a little confused. It seems to me that there is parking on both sides of the house. There's existing parking on the, where the shared garage is, and then there's parking on the...
There's two sides of parking there. You're absolutely right.
There is, yeah.
But it's a six thousand square foot lot.
Yeah.
It seems like it should be adequate.
Again, I don't wanna labor it, but I just think...
Let's do the obstruction. That makes the most sense.
They're gonna have a crane or something in there doing the demolition, which is gonna take up space and supervisors' trucks and whatever.
Well, no, I think the parking space that's there now is probably gonna be needed just for the dumpsters taking...
Well, that's right, yeah.
It's a six thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, it's not, there is parking on both sides, and there's decent, for that area, there's actually pretty decent parking on this lot, but that's just saying, you know, that that area doesn't have parking at all, right? So, it's not as deep when you look at this as you may think about what you could actually fit on each of those. So, I mean, I think we're certainly fine in the, but no, you know, blocking or impeding with egress, obstruction, yeah.
So, writing here that for the life of the approved project, construction vehicles will not block or obstruct egress or traffic on Eastern Avenue.
That's fine.
Are we in agreement with that? Folks?
Yes.
Okay. You got a thumbs up in the back row, I just want you to know that. Okay, so we're all set here. All right, and also, obviously, the contractor doesn't need to bring in, you know, three dumpsters at once to take the house down, fill it up, and go away. They do it gradually, there should be a little bit more room to park on the lot. So, they would consider that and then give the butters, homeowners there a heads up when all this is gonna start. That'd be great. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that'd like to speak regarding this case? So, that being the case, let's just go over the...
Yep.
Documents, findings, and facts. Guiding application hearing documents, we all set here? Do I have all the dates correct?
Number four is April instead of May.
Is it April twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, number five?
Yeah.
That's, it's actually two thousand and four. I just submitted those as the existing floor plans. So, it says twenty twenty-five, it's actually two oh oh four. Number five.
Yeah, so it's, so the plans are twenty-one years old?
No, the plans are number...
Twenty twenty-four.
No, no, no. The plant, number four, is the current plans of what the new house will be. Number five is the plans of what the old house is. So, it's two thousand and four.
Okay, excuse me. I have construction documents dated April twenty-first. And they had, I thought it was dated new house floor plans by Thomas Moore.
No, not new house, house floor plans, sorry.
That's what it said on the signature mark.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But it is twelve twenty, two thousand and four.
So, it does say new?
It does.
It says new, but the date is eight twelve, two thousand and four. Hopefully, Mr. Moore remembers.
Yeah. He remembers it yesterday, like yesterday.
All right, so it's house floor plans by Thomas A. Moore Design Company dated August twelfth, two thousand and four?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Moore is here for a different project, so he could...
Says he remembers the garage.
Mr. Moore, how did that garage happen? Just out of curiosity.
Eight forty-four.
All right.
There were two houses, the...
Okay, we'll keep going. All right, you got any findings and conditions?
Yeah, those are all fine.
Everything all set? Guys, any questions, comments?
No.
Okay. All righty, and so we're gonna go with the, we talked about the motions. I think we're all set on there. And I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the findings and facts and documentation and so forth as presented and revised.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second by Marilyn. Vote on the closing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sign the case. For voting, it'd be Al, Chris, John, Ken, and Marilyn. And Chair will entertain a motion to close discussion. All those in favor? Actually, I... Okay, Ken, make a motion. And second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I will read in number two when you come to it. So, Al, would you please present a motion, please?
Case number twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, nine Eastern Avenue, Lawrence and Carol Co. Co. Call is Michael Donovan. Special permit for three twenty-five, A, four, and five, nonconforming structures uses, three twenty-five, attachment to table two, area regulation twenty, twenty, three twenty-five, attachment three, table three, height and bulk regulation. Raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws, three twenty-five, fifty-four, and that Mass. General Law forty, eighty, forty-eight, section six. Granting is consistent with the Gale and related cases. There will be no intensification of existing nonconformities and no new nonconformities and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. And a pre-existing nonconforming lot, as the proposed structure, will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to noise, traffic, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here unto, here under, rather, is hereby denied and all works shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application and said grant and approval of the subject's form conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June thirty and Labor Day of any year.
Two, that for the life of the approved project, construction vehicles will be, will not block or obstruct egress or traffic on Eastern Avenue.
Violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section seven, and the Howard's zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Any further discussion, folks? All right, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
John, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I'll stick around, Mike, for the rest of the meeting. Mr. Moore, did you get a copy of the staff report?
Yes, I did, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, Al, there's the next one. Six Field Lane.
All right, case number twenty twenty-five dash forty-two, Six Field Lane, Lawrence and Carol Co. Co. Mr. Aton, Mr. Moore, doing the construction and design. They have the only property located at Six Field Lane, assessment map thirteen parcel, T seven dash six, and I H one zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit in three twenty-five, fifty-four, A, one, and two, nonconforming structures and uses in three twenty-five, attachment to table two, area regulations construct. In addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws, three twenty-five, fifty-four, and the Mass. General Laws, forty-eight, section six. The health department commented that a fully compliant septic system will be required. A licensed installer must apply for a special permit, for a permit prior to the building permit sign-off. The Howard's planning department and historic commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. No other comments from other town departments or authorities were received.
I'd like to have the applicant representatives induce themselves and those assisting you with your presentation.
Good evening, Thomas Moore from Moore Home Design Company, representing Lawrence and Carol Co. Co. This property's been in the Co. Co. family since, I think, nineteen ninety-seven. The Lawrence and Carol, I believe, had taken over the property in twenty fifteen, I believe, so. In that time, they've used it, and now they're looking to remodel it, add on to it. Sounds to you like what we're doing is taking the structure down to the first floor deck, keeping the foundation, and then rebuilding up above that with the addition and expansion that shown on the plans that I provided to you. This property is pre-existing nonconforming for, you know, a couple of different reasons. The size of the lot, the frontage of the property, and the front right corner of the existing house is too close, is twenty-three point five feet to the front property line where twenty-five feet is required. In expanding this project with the additions, we're not creating any new nonconformities. We are, you know, along the front, you know, we're adding a porch on the front, which goes out roughly about the same distance as the existing stoop or step that's on the front of the house right now. So, it does, you know, that dimension is closer to the street as, you know, versus the existing front corner of the house, but it doesn't go out anymore than the existing front step. So, if that's something that, you know, maybe is an issue, we could conceivably take that away. We did that just for more looks on the outside of the house, as far as the front of the house, and to provide some cover for getting in the front door. The rest of it, as far as the building coverage, site coverage, the other setbacks are all conform, and the building height conforms. There will be a new septic system for this. And, you know, we do not think that this will be substantially more detrimental than the existing house to the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm assuming that's a, obviously, by nature, it's a covered porch, correct?
Yes.
And what is the height of the deck on the west side gonna be?
The height of the deck?
Yeah.
On the driveway side?
Yeah, right. I call the west side, but that's right.
Yeah, that would be just a, just a, you know, a standard deck that's maybe eighteen inches off the ground.
And timeframe?
They're looking to start this fall.
Well, happy not to have it this fall. And regarding maintaining vehicles on the lot?
There's, you know, certainly parking, you know, that they have on the driveway side, and prior to installing the septic system, there'd be some space on that side, too.
Okay, so we can, you'd be able to maintain...
There is, there is space there, I believe.
You'd be able to maintain vehicles on the site?
I would think so, yes.
This is the one, we get the documents part. I read that the Billy Commissioner's denial letter was dated July thirty-first, and the application was July thirtieth. Let me just, so I get things accurate here. I looked at that a dozen times.
July letters, July eleventh.
July... Okay, you have eleven. Why did I think it would, I read July thirty-first? Okay, thank you. And the application was July thirtieth, okay. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I had it wrong in my, never mind. It's on my, it's on my report correctly. But I get, I get the date on the application is the twenty-ninth. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Good. I don't have any, I think everything's straightforward here. I don't have any questions regarding the raise and replace. Chris?
Yeah, as far as the front porch, that's a minor increase in nonconformity, so that's not an issue for me.
Marilyn?
No questions?
None.
John?
I have no issues. I think it's a good project. I just have a curiosity question. On the proposed site plan, there's all these little areas called reserve SAS.
That's for, for the reserve area for the septic system.
Why is it on the opposite side of the property?
They have to find space on the property to put it, and that's the only space that they had on the property to, you know, for, it's even kind of odd as far as the shape and size compared to...
There's no piping connection to that, is there?
It's just what they have to do as far as the septic system designs.
You done?
I was curious.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak to this? Okay, hearing none. Let's move forward to the staff report, which I did. Going to the application hearing documents. Is there any changes? Or corrections? All right, and regarding recommended findings, conditions based on documents submitted to date? Anything needs to be changed here, folks? Okay, all right, we're on our roll. And then regarding the conditions, the standard three, no construction between June thirty and Labor Day on exterior construction or demolition. Life of the project, there are obvious projects on the property, and the terms, the violation terms of the Howard's zoning bylaws. These are three. I'd like to make a motion to accept the documents, findings, and facts and conditions of approval as stipulated. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Six zero. Chair asks for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John, and by Ken. I'd like to vote on the closing.
Aye.
All those in favor? All right, voting on this would be Al, Chris, John, Ken, and Marilyn. I'd like to entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Okay, Chris, and second by Marilyn. Are there voters on the motion to close discussion?
Aye.
Any further discussion by the board? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to ask the clerk to, Al, to read the motion.
All right, case number twenty twenty-five dash forty-two, Six Field Lane, Lawrence and Carol... Lawrence and Carol CoCot. Through their, through Moore Homes Design, the owner of the property located at Six Field Lane Assessors Map 13 parcel T7-6 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 325A1N2, nonconforming structures and uses in 325 area attachment table two, attachment two, table two area regulations to construct an addition for pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling with removal of the existing structure down to the first floor, subfloor, keeping the existing foundation and rebuild structure, rebuild structure to expand the footprint as shown on the architectural designs pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-54 and Mass General law 48 section six. Creating as consistent with Gail and related cases as there will be no intensification of one or more existing nonconformities and no new nonconformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot and as the proposed structure will not create additional negative impacts with respect to traffic noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here on two is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the applicant, application, and second, said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, and new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. That, for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public street or road. And thirdly, a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass General law chapter 48 section seven and a Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
I have a second for this motion.
Second.
Second by Chris. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, hearing none. I'd like the folks to give a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Okay, thank you.
Closure. Mr. Moore, I'm assuming you've got a copy of the staff report for 32 Bell Brook?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yep.
There's the next one, Al.
All right, case number 2025-43, 32 Bell Brook Road, William and Christine Burt, through Thomas A. Moore Home Design. The owner of the property located at 32 Bell Brook Road, Assessors Map 23, parcel X1 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from 325-54A1N2, nonconforming structures and uses in 325 attachment to table two area regulations to construct. In addition, on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-54 and the Mass General law chapter 48 section six, the health department commented that a passing Title V report must be submitted by a licensed Title V installer prior to the building permit sign-off. The conservation department submitted comment that a small portion of the property addition is in an AE flood zone and will need Conservation Commission approval. Howard's planning department historic commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns and no other comments from other town departments or bodies were received.
Okay. It's Moore, if you'd like to induce yourselves and you, I'm helping you with tonight's presentation.
Yep, again, Thomas Moore, representing William and Christine Burt. Bill Burt is back here. And we're looking to put an addition on this pre-existing nonconforming property and This property is nonconforming for a couple of reasons. One, because of the size of the lot, and two, because of the rear setback, you know, is 7.4 feet where 20 feet is required. As far as the addition, we're looking to expand out the back of the house and out to the side, creating more utility type of space, you know, kitchen, mudroom, laundry, pantry type of space. The proposed addition will be, you know, a little further away from the rear property line than the existing deck, you know, just by a few tenths of a foot. This portion of, or portion of the addition is in the flood zone, so the foundation will have to be flood compliant. The top of the new foundation, you know, in, of the existing house and the proposed house is up above the flood elevation, so I don't see, anticipate anything there as far as an issue. We just have to provide some flood vents in the foundation. Other than that, I think it's a pretty straightforward addition itself and, you know, something that would enhance this house, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Before I pass on the other members, our timeframe?
As soon as possible. Yeah, we still have to go through the Conservation Commission, so.
Fall, winter.
The fall, winter, yeah.
And I think you have plenty of rooms to maintain vehicles in the lot?
I believe we do.
Okay. So, I had, particularly for a while, I spent a lot of time looking at these plans and understanding the past year on this, on this lot. The, how old is the, the deck that's actually, or it's really an extension of a, yeah, it's a, call it a deck. It's only eight inches high, but how old is that?
I don't know, to be honest with you. Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
It was all about the house.
And you, you were there in 2011, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. The, given the nature of the, I'm going to approve, I'm going to indicate the fact that I'm in favor of going forward with this tonight. However, as far as this kind of situation, where we have a deck that I could not find any building permits for in the past, however, it's, I know it's over 10 years old, which, which now makes the fact the deck itself is being legal, all right? I guess for cases going forward, because I'm going to be requesting a, an opinion from the town attorney, the, the issue on a, a deck, in this case, it's only attached to the house by the stairs. There's no attachment to any other part of the house. So, it's, it is part of the house's structure in regards to it's attached to the stairs, but it isn't attached to the house. It's just, it butts the house. There's no attachment to the house itself, okay? So, it, it, you know, typically, it's a, it's a pre-existing nonconformity that right now is legal because it's been over 10 years. And in the past, this board has typically approved a dwelling unit to use the pre-existing nonconforming setback, you know, of a deck. Whereas in this particular case, it's, it really is more of a landing, you know, than it is essentially a deck, but who knows? But anyways, the, the past, the board has approved these things, but I do feel the fact that the board needs to seek clarification from the town attorney, who I contacted today, and she wasn't sure either way how to address this. But I do know the fact the board in the past has approved this type of project. Okay. Chris?
No questions.
No comments, no questions.
No questions regarding this.
I've got a couple, but one of which is, Tom, I'm just looking at your last case and I'm looking at this case. This has lots of pluses or minuses on the measurements. And when your last submission, whatever it was, Six Fields, you obviously were very specific. Why the estimate of your lot lines and your setback?
I was just going by what was on the engineered plan. So, that would be the only reason why, because when you look at the table of the zoning requirements of the, that the site engineer surveyor did, that's where my numbers came from. That's why they were plus or minus, only because that's how he denoted them.
Thank you for that explanation. And I, Brian, to your point, and I know John's going to address it maybe a bit further, about creating habitable space over that landing.
Well, I mean, correct. I mean, I just, it just doesn't sit right with me. But I know in the past, we've gone forward on it, and in talking to the attorney today, she said, you know, technically, there may be a qualification here on doing this, which the board has done in the past.
It is an enhancement, right, of the nonconforming?
That's, I think, how I look at it. It's already nonconforming, it's just an intensification of that nonconformity, right? Right. And the issue that I have is it's not, if, this, this deck does not provide, it's, it's actually, I would bet your calculations on site, on the site plan calculations, is that that deck was not you, was that deck used in calculating building coverage or site coverage?
I would expect site coverage.
Right. So, we got a situation that it's not even, the site plan isn't considering this as part of the building. And in these kind of scenarios, I question whether or not the board should be approving creating habitable space and a dwelling unit on something that's in there for site coverage and is not, and is not providing shelter, okay? The, so that's, that's my, you know, and per the town attorney, I spoke to her briefly, she said, send me the facts. I, because we've done in the past, it's been approved. On this particular case tonight, I don't feel the fact that we should go for continuance and wait for, you know, a couple of months of getting the attorney to weigh in on it. But her comment to me was that the zoning laws are ambiguous here and they need to be fixed or clarified. That's what I was briefly told by the town attorney.
Heard you.
I mean, which might make you feel a little bit bad, but it's not on the drawing, is, you know what the distance is from the house to the property lot, absent the deck?
Originally, I looked at it in 11.85, but I don't think that's, that's not.
I measured it today. I mean, I spent some time here.
Is it nonconforming?
Yes, it is.
Less than 20 feet.
It is less than 20 feet.
So, I mean, you could make the argument that.
We could expand.
That it's not necessarily the deck, it's that houses are nonconforming.
That would be true.
It's intensifying.
The house.
The house.
Yeah, all right. That's a, so went for your call.
Yeah, but I wish it was on the drawing. I wish it actually had the, those numbers are elevations, I'm pretty sure, at the corners of the building.
The 11.85, yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's elevation. Well, looking at some of the other distances, 32 feet from the one corner and everything, I would guess it's less than 20 feet.
I did, hold on a second. I did do a measurement today, and I don't want to take a lot of time here on this, but let me just pull out the videotape. All right, so, the deck, the deck, the deck itself is seven feet, three inches, and hold on a second, plus 69, okay, hold on a second. It doesn't, it's basically around 12 feet. So, it's running around, it's, it's close to 20 feet to the house.
19.8 there.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
Plus or minus.
It's just under, it's just under 20 feet.
Because, I mean, that's, to be honest with you, my, my issue, and Brian and I did exchange some questions previously, is I have an issue with making the deck be the reason why we're creating the habitable space, but I can get my head around that the building is already.
Nonconforming.
Nonconforming, and you're intensifying that nonconformity. I'm really worried about establishing a precedence that just because you have a deck, you can suddenly turn that inhabitable space that's, that's not performing, you know?
That deck is not attached to the house.
It's not, it's, it is attached to the house via the staircase. That's it.
So, the answer is yes, it is attached.
It's attached to the house, basically, because it's on this, it's on this, technically, it's on the stairs coming down.
It's attached.
So, it qualifies me attached, it's over 10 years old, it's legal, and even if something's put on, which, which, and again, I'm not saying ever, I'm not saying never got a building permit, I just can't find one.
Right, right.
And it could have been in the original house in 86, because those support beams there look pretty old. They've been recovered, but that's okay.
Yeah.
But I was about to make a point here, and I'm losing it, but the, even when something is done illegally originally, it becomes legal after 10 years, and then you can utilize that now legal scenario to greatly expand the size of your house. And I think that's one aspect of it that, that just drives me crazy, okay? But neither said, this gentleman is how he bought the house, I mean, in good faith, he felt the fact that it was a situation here, and I do feel the fact that, given past scenarios, we should go for approval, but I'd like to, I'm going to propose to the board that I write up an opinion for the attorney, while presenting at the next meeting, then to send it to her for clarification in these kind of situations, okay? So, I'm not going to do it without the board seeing my questions, or I'll send them out at some point.
Okay.
All right. That being said, did we?
So, I mean, I think, just looking at the drawing, that, I guess it would be the northeast corner of the house, would appear to be like less than 20 feet.
It's, it's right on, it's right on the money. I think it's right, I actually, if I did my calculations, it's, the deck is 13 feet from the house, the edge of the deck, and that's seven feet, that's over, so that means it's already over 20 feet.
The house is slightly skewed on the lot.
Oh, that's true. Yes, you're right. You're right.
The northeast corner.
That, that could be over. So, the, the other corner appears to be in, seems to be outside the 20 feet, okay? The other corner may not be. And then I thought there was a different rule if it's over four, four feet or more in height, because under four feet in height, you can take a deck and put it halfway into the setback.
Right, right.
So, legally, you could go to 10 feet, but then once someone has something 10 feet out, what's to stop them a few years later, all of a sudden calling a nonconformity and building a house on it? So, I think we, we ought to kind of look at this thing and how we button it up going forward. Okay. All right, so, throwing into my review here, I think, all right, so we're, findings and facts were all, all set on that. That's what we left, left, last left this. And on the motions, we're all set on all three, timewise, construction vehicles on the site.
I think it's a private road anyways, right?
And terms and conditions, but, okay. So, I'd like to make.
Isn't this the last house on the street?
I think the one beyond it.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the documents, finds, and facts, conditions as approved, as approval stipulated.
Second.
Second.
Okay, 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 all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion to close public hearing.
Will move.
Second.
For the closing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. All right, voting on the case, Al, Chris, John, Ken, and Marilyn. Like to entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Okay, vote on the motion to close?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? And I'd like to request the clerk to make a motion, please.
On case number twenty-two-five, that's forty-three, thirty-two Bell Brook Road. Property owners William and Christine Burt through Thomas A. Moore Home Design. The owner's property located thirty-two Bell Brook Road assesses map twenty-three parcel exit one in the R L zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from three twenty-five fifty-four A, one N, two, non-conforming structures and uses. The three twenty-five attachment to cable to area regulations to construct. In addition, on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to Howard's zoning bylaw, three twenty-five fifty-four en masse general law forty A, section six. Granted is consistent with the Gale and related cases as there will be no intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformities, and no substantial deferment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic noise, odor, congestion. Any relief not here, is not expressly granted here under is hereby denied and all works shall be revolved in accordance with the plan submitted. And with this application and the grant of approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, and new landscaping, between June thirty and Labor Day of any year. At the life of the project, as the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public street or road. And a violation of terms and the conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaws pursuant to mess general law chapter forty-eight, section seven, and the Howard's zoning bylaws as these may be amended from time to time.
Just one revision. It's, and I wrote it wrong on this thing here. It's, it's Bell Brook Lane, not Road. Okay? And there will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities. I have a second on the motion as revised. Okay, vote on the motion, folks.
Aye.
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 You have it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, I actually, someplace in here misplaced my agenda. Nope. Here it is.
Nothing left on mine.
Okay, good, thank you.
Send back to the office.
All right. Let's jump on the minutes. First one to do is the July thirtieth of the last, our last meeting, regular meeting.
My only comment is there's not an adjournment time listed, and that's, that's unusual. We typically say when we start a meeting, when we end a meeting.
I'm sure we did.
So I would just recommend that we include time. I don't forget to amend this one, but going forward, we should make sure that there's a time.
Yeah, it, let it go. It was adjourned, but I'd have to go back to the-
Again, let it-
I'd have to go back. I mean, I have notes someplace on this, but I'll see if I can find it. Other than that, anybody else have any other comments? Okay. And regarding the-
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July thirtieth, twenty-five.
Sure, yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, roll here. All right.
Bless you.
Bless us all. Okay.
Bless Tony Town.
The August sixth minutes for-
Brian, I should call your attention to page two, the third paragraph for sentence. Mr. Sullivan requested and demanded that the consultants be present. You want to leave the and demanded? I guess I didn't hear you say I demand you to be there.
Yeah, I think I kind of made that clear. I think I did demand.
You're fine with demanding.
He was adamant.
I was, I was pretty clear with that one.
Okay, that's, and I haven't, again, there's no adjournment time. I think there should be.
Okay, we'll make sure. Lisa, can you make sure that, make a note to the, whatever it is, minutes, that let's get an adjournment time in here? Well, if you want to go back, go to videotape, that's fine, and find these things, but, but do ask her to include the adjournment time. Or him. I, I, I'm not quite sure who prepares them. They do a fine job preparing the minutes. I just like, let's include the adjournment time. With the emphasis on demanded, can we have a motion to approve this?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, guys. We were requested to come up with comments for the Howard's Charter Review Committee. Did any of you guys come up with suggestions for us to pass on? You know, I don't know how you spend your days, you know, but we just, all right. So I wrote something up because I felt the fact that-
That's a good question. I'll tell you right-
Well, we know how he spent his day. He had a picture to show.
I mean, in between catching six hundred pound tuna, you'd think he'd have time to make a suggestion.
Six hundred and ninety-one pounds.
Six ninety-one. Did anybody get a plate of fish tonight? I didn't see, I didn't see my plate of fish.
I didn't either.
No.
He couldn't. He had to sell it. You have to go to Max.
I got no fish either, so don't get me in a hurry.
He has to go to Max.
The Japanese mafia was waiting.
I pay outrageous prices.
All right, so it occurred to me, and I'll just read this, is, guys, I mean, I think you're all going to say yes, but this is my idea.
Yes.
Okay, the town charter commission should design a comment survey to gather thoughtful, actionable public input on proposed or potential changes to town's charter. Design should encourage broad participation while producing feedback that is specific, relevant, and usable for commission deliberations. It has anticipated that most residents have not read or studied their current charter, so it's unlikely the average resident will have an opinion as to what aspects of it they would like to see changed without being asked about specific topics. The new charter commission has several meetings, I'm sure, and we are sure, are sure you have already organized a key areas of government that are either working in the commission's viewpoint or two aspects of the current charter that should be changed. The survey is a reasonable document to generate feedback in those key aspects of town government and management, which the commission feels are important to gather public opinion and/or support.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'd like to have a motion that we send this to the charter commission.
So moved.
Okay. Any, any changes, additions? Okay. All right, Al, made a motion, sorry, who seconded it?
Chris.
Chris, who seconded it? Okay. And-
I actually have a stupid question regarding this. Is the current charter available on the website?
I have no idea. I didn't look it up. I, I, I did originally do a whole bunch of questions that should be asked, but I think that was being-
Well, the only thing I would add to this is that if it is available on the website, they should make the link to it very visible.
It probably is.
So that, you know, if people do want, I agree with you. Most people are not found it, but if someone wants to find it, they don't have to go through eight sub-pages on the website to find it, you know?
There will be a lot of questions that should be, people that want to change on this thing. And I think some of it's going to be type of town meeting government, whether it should be how it is now or be representative. And these are things that I've heard floated out there, but I think they should do a survey and let people fill it out, send it in. Okay?
I will just, here you go, send egg deck on key, shouldn't be capitalized.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Can the board on the motion?
Okay, all those in favor?
As amended.
Okay. Ken, you can quickly update if you like to this point. I know you've discussed your plans for zoning code changes.
Right, I'm meeting with Chair of the Planning Committee Duncan Berry later this week to open the first discussion, set up formal meetings. But I need anybody on this board who has any suggested changes to any of the zoning to get them to me in writing, please. Not before Thursday, but sometime in the next, before, I'll just say before our next meeting. That'd be very helpful, because I want to represent the entire group, so I'm going to need comments from anybody.
Yeah, I will send everybody out. I, I gave Ken, sent him an email and written copies of what I had prepared in the past. And I, and also, they've all been presented over the last two or three years to the planning board and have yet to get any action or feedback. Okay? Including, I'll send it out to everybody. I had, I did a draft of the permual code. Did I send that to everybody? I think you already got that one. Maybe not, but I'll send it out to everybody so you have what I gave Ken tonight as far as past, past ideas. So you can expand upon those.
There was a document that was prepared, I think, when I first joined the board, probably Dave Ry or somebody did, on things that would have to change to conform with Gale and Dietrich.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I worked on it. Yeah, that's, that's in that list.
That's in your list of stuff? Because I think that, you know-
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
And there's been changes, again, not to that one, but to the A D U. That's another big one that has to be changed.
There's a, there's a whole, there's a whole slew. I mean, I have more than what I already gave you. The changes need to be made. So it, it-
We're going to pick the low hanging fruit, just, you know, we're not, we don't come in here thinking we're going to change eleven different zoning guidelines. We're going to pick what comes, what comes to us most often that shouldn't come to us, like the two we talked about today.
Well, that's where I go with the Gale and Dietrich thing, is I think there's, there should be something, I don't know, it's probably several sections that would be changed. It basically says that, given that the changes and everything, if, if your property was made non-conforming because of zoning, right? All these older properties in town, that the Gale and Dietrich should automatically be applied at the discretion of the building commissioner and not have to put people through the expense of going, you know, hiring a lawyer.
Especially where we, that one today, where we filled in a gap.
Yeah, yeah.
That's silly.
That's a no-brainer.
If, if it beats the criteria for Gale and Dietrich, why, why do we put people through this process?
We would have to define Gale and Dietrich.
Yeah, that's the thing. That's why they get tied into that.
Make some parameters.
But I think the key is, which to me, the paid personnel in the building department are in a better position to say-
Absolutely.
To me, the first question is, was your lot made non-conforming because of zoning? If the way zoning was drawn made you non-conforming, then, then you're pre-existing. If there's a question to that, then it can come to the board. But, you know, these places down in the Camp Brown and some of the other places, you know, some of the ones we saw today, the only reason they're non-conforming is because they existed before the zoning was ready.
But again, if they're going to, if they're going to intensify the non-conformity, they got to see us.
Right, no, I think that would, you know, that would come to us. But half the ones here were, were lessening than non-conforming.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you. The same thing is, based upon the current bylaws, you, you need to, if you're doing addition, if you're taking your unfinished basement and you're going to make it habitable space, you got to apply for a special permit.
Right.
All right, to pass, the last building commissioner, and I, yeah, he and I had a discussion on it, and he agreed, we're not going to, I'm going to just approve all these going forward. Because we were just seeing them, probably stamping them, and just throwing our time. And causing a lot of people grief because they want to put a few two-by-fours. But I will-
Another one, now, we'll just keep moving. Another one that I'm thinking about is that the shape number of twenty-two, where no one knows where it came from or how to compute it. We got to figure out why that evening's us. That's just an example. So if you think of things like that, please email.
Someone put a lot of thought into that, so there must have been a reason.
We'll find out.
All right, so, well, I want to move on tonight. I did get some background on that, but-
Again, this is not for tonight's discussion, but send me your thoughts.
Yeah, so we'll, the, I mean, currently, I think, you know, perhaps one of the priorities might be trying to move in on the permual situation. But that's besides. We can have that discussion. Let's get things moving with the, with the planning board, because they're the ones in charge.
Yep.
All right, so our next, first of all, our, our next meeting of the board-
Let's see. Right here?
Yeah, our next meeting of Pine Oaks is the seventeenth. Next public meeting here, as far as a general meeting, is going to be the twenty-fourth. So you, folks are aware, the selectmen have hired, has, have offered a position to a, to a new building commissioner. And I think not the next meeting, but actually, there's no meeting next week, but the following week. I think that's going to be formalized and, and I believe that my understanding was that she has accepted the position. Okay? So-
Is the location of those meetings? Will it be, are we still meeting at the town center or whatever it was that had the bad audio?
Yes, now, okay. So real quick on that, I had a, a meeting with the new town administrator. I had a discussion with the select board chairman and a follow-up meeting with, with Tony regarding the audio. And they, he is pursuing, trying to at least temporarily, you know, solve the problem, even if they have to consider, you know, well, there's, he has options. He's looking at how we can solve the problems, we need a proper audio at the next meeting. Okay? And that'll be addressed. You all, and you can't get in a discussion, we got any Pine Oaks tonight, but you, you have my emails of the updated summary reports that have been presented so far. And the agenda, I'm on, as of tomorrow night, or actually, early three AM, whatever, Friday morning, I'm on a vacation, I'm back on the eighth. And at that point-
Have you cleared that with us?
Yeah, I don't know. We can have a motion if you like, you know, but it, and at that point, I'll be meeting with Christine to finalize an agenda, I mean, a draft. Then I'll get together with, also with, if everyone agrees with Ken, just to, to go over that draft and then get it out to everybody regarding, you know, the draft of the next meeting. But it is going to be focusing on everything except traffic. Okay? So it's the, so we have the peer, I forget the name of the company, a peer review, as we've done by another, you know, the third-party peer company regarding conservation, as well as we'll be hearing from the conservation agent at the next meeting. And also a review of the peer consultant from D H P regarding, you know, site plans and so forth. That is about it. All right, so anybody have anything more they want to discuss tonight? Is there any old business? I see Marilyn's got her arms on, hands on the armchair, ready to launch. And I'd like to ask, it's now nine thirty-eight. I'd like to hear motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved.
Second, Chris. Okay.
All in favor?
We are all in favor.